Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of June 10, 2014. Thank you to the Garden Club for the floral arrangement they always provide for our meetings. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Here.
Mayor Ruwain.
Here. Frank Hedley would lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, announcements. Item A, the city council will schedule study sessions beginning at 6:00 PM on June 11th and 12th if needed, 2014, to review the proposed fiscal year 2014-15 budgets at 567 El Camino Real, City Hall, Room 115. Item B, the city council reminds all residents that the continuing drought conditions create heightened concern for fire safety over the upcoming Fourth of July holiday. Information about city regulations concerning proper use of safe and sane fireworks is available on the city website at www.sanbruno.ca.gov, and this is another reminder that you will be seeing all around town. So we don't take this lightly. Illegal fireworks are not allowed. Presentations, there are no presentations this evening. Item five, review of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Due to some late received information that we just learned about today, staff is requesting that we pull item number 10C regarding contracts for the Canes to Angus sewer bypass improvement project. That project will return for award of contract at a later date.
Okay, we will pull 10C. Any other changes, review of the agenda? Okay. Item six, approval of the minutes of the special city council meeting of May 29, 2014, and regular council meeting of May 27, 2014. Any errors, changes, omissions? Seeing none, they'll be approved as submitted. Consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff.
Through the chair.
Irene?
I'd like to pull 7E, please.
7E. Anything else? Any action on the remainder?
Move to approve the rest.
Second.
Motion is second. Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 7E is adopt a resolution authorizing the extension of the joint use agreement between the city of San Bruno and the San Bruno Park School District through October 15, 2014. Irene?
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge, first of all, staff and the subcommittee of the council that worked with the school board subcommittee and staff. This has been going on since the spring of 2013, and I'd like to thank staff and the subcommittee for all the work they've been doing. I also like to bring this to a separate vote because I feel that since they've had almost a year to deal with this and that our council approved what they initially sent us and we sent it back to them and they subsequently did not approve it, I don't see any particular reason to extend the contract. So I'd like to put it up for a separate vote.
Okay.
So I move not to approve it.
All right. Chair, a second?
I'll second for a discussion.
Okay. Does the motion is second to actually to not approve the resolution, item 10E?
Through the chair.
Any questions?
I'd like some clarification, what if we don't extend? Just under the same guidelines? Current guidelines?
Technically, the previous joint use agreement, as previously extended by both you and the school district, has expired as of May 11th. The city has continued, in the interest of the community service that it provides, to continue, we have continued to maintain school district fields on the same basis and at the same levels as have, were envisioned under the previous joint use agreement. So technically, an action to not extend the effective date of the previously existing joint use agreement would call into question the actions that you would like us to take. We would seek your direction as to the continued operation of field maintenance activities. Otherwise, there would be no immediate effect that, well, and I guess it would call into question then, we would need to speak separately to the school district to evaluate what would be the arrangement by which we would use school district facilities for other programs.
I'm going to ask the members of the subcommittee to comment also, so I can make a decision here.
Chair, so councilmember Salazar and myself were on the subcommittee, and I appreciate your comments. This was, as you know, it was not passed by a 3-2 vote. My understanding is that some of the school board members are not having an issue as far as extending an agreement between the two agencies. It's more about the cost that could be affected to the youth and the families for those programs that currently exist. I think that's part of some of their concern, and they do have a few others. To me, they've asked for a short extension. I think my vote will be to extend it for the simple reason that we have ongoing programs, we have youth that are getting value and being served by these programs, these activities, and our continued agreement, both sports and after-school care. So to not extend that, I think, puts that in jeopardy and in question. And to me, for the greater good, for the community, I think the two, the city and the school board subcommittees can get back together, which we are going to, bring it back to the council in reasonable time, and to the school board, and make sure that we get it passed.
Anything, Michael?
No, I agree with everything that the vice mayor just said. I think it is important to keep the programs rolling. It's unfortunate that it wasn't passed because there was a lot of time and effort put in by a lot of different people to get to an agreement. So as unfortunate as it is, we do want to make sure that both agencies are comfortable with all of the terms, so we're perfectly willing to meet with them again and iron out any remaining issues.
Okay.
Through the chair. Thank you. And I agree, too, that we should not jeopardize, put the programs in jeopardy, but I'm just disappointed in the school board. They opened up, I want to say, a can of worms, a whole year ago. They said, "We're not happy with what we're doing. We're changing our policy. Let's change this." You all worked on it for over a year. We gave it back to them on their guidelines, and then they disapproved it. So I don't want to stop the programs. I don't want to do this. I just want to send a message to the school board that if they open this kind of thing up, they need to follow through with it in a timely manner. A whole year is a long time, so...
Through the chair, and I want to concur that it is the school board that gave notice to the city for its appropriate notice to dissolve the agreement and to go back into that. In hindsight, and what I had wished, with the subcommittee that we have established for communications, is for the parties to come together, find areas that we know need to have adjustments made in the agreement, and you don't jeopardize what exists today for the, again, for the community that we serve. Both of us serve the same town. So I wish they had had that come forward, but that was the action that was taken, and that's how we're here. And I do agree, it has taken quite a while.
Okay. Anything else on the question?
The previous extension expired February?
The original, so the school district exercised the termination option under the existing agreement last fall, and the agreement originally expired with six months' notice on February 10th. This body, your city council, as well as the school board, subsequently extended through May 10th, a period of an additional 90 days, in order to allow time to complete negotiations of a successor agreement. And so the agreement as extended has now expired as effective May 11th.
Can you give us, give us some assurances that we won't, it won't get to October? That you'll be, that they'll be working on it, you know, expeditiously in the next couple of months?
What I can tell you is that the superintendent made an appointment to visit with myself and the community services director immediately the next day after the board meeting at which the board took the action to disapprove the agreement. He expressed the, obviously, the staff's position, as well as the board's position, that we get right back at work to try and resolve the various issues that were expressed by board members in that discussion. And we carefully, between the staff of our two agencies, worked out the October date as, couldn't imagine that we couldn't get it done by then. So we carefully considered the fact that summer and council meetings and that type of thing may create a little bit of timeline to regroup, but as the vice mayor has indicated, we are aggressively working right now to get a meeting scheduled between the subcommittee of the city and the subcommittee of the school board, and we look at that as a very positive first step in getting this thing back on track. So based on what I know right now, there should be no reason why this can't be done by October.
Okay.
And on our end, I give you the commitment that summer is upon us for the school districts, and obviously, there may be vacations, but that we can meet, there will be no October surprise. There, we will get it done before I, my goal would be to have it done and to us before school starts.
Okay, there is a motion and a second to disapprove the adoption of the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, resolution adopted. No?
I would recommend somebody making a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second to approve the resolution for adoption. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Now, adopt the resolution. Item number eight, public hearings. There aren't any public hearings this evening. Item number nine, public comment, an item is not on this agenda. It is the council's policy of fur matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Anyone like to address the council? Mr. Rico?
Robert Rico, as your trustee to the mosquito district, I had a few comments, and before I get into them, I forwarded to the council and the city manager this afternoon. We got notice, the district put out a press release on June 4th of this year, a bird that they, a dead bird that they collected in San Carlos, tested positive for West Nile virus. This is the first positive in Sematell County this year. We're having our regular trustees meeting tomorrow, so I may hear a little bit more. But what I really came to talk to you about is the Sematell County Mosquito and Vector Control District met with the 4-H Club on May 14th, our vector ecologist. They gave a presentation on mosquitoes, and I forwarded the presentation to the council. It was very informative, had some real good lifecycle pictures. The 4-H Club assists the district with mosquito monitoring by providing electrical power and a protected location for the New Jersey light trap at their farm near Mills Field. This is one of the pieces of hardware that the district puts out in various locations in the, in the city, I mean, in the county, to collect mosquitoes. So the 4-H is, again, providing that. The district wants to thank the 4-H and the city for their continued support of the district's monitoring programs. The district, again, reminds all residents to continue to dump all standing water and to report dead blackbirds, not ones that are run over by a vehicle, to 1-877-WNV for West Nile Virus, B-I-R-D. Additional West Nile virus information can be found at the state's website, http://westnile.ca.gov. And if any of the residents have concerns here in San Bruno, they can call the district at 344-8592. And if anybody has any questions, I will be happy to try and get answers, and thank you again for your continued support. I know the Parks Department is, is real, my words gung-ho, in being eyes for us out in the, in the community, so special thanks to the Parks Department.
All right, thank you, Robert. Would anyone else like to address the council?
Mayor?
Yes.
Can we go back to the motion that you made? No one made the first or the second. You just all said yes. Could I have a first?
No, there was a first and a second.
On the motion?
On the resolution.
Uh-huh.
Yes, I believe Ken was first and Rico was second.
Thank you.
Okay.
I missed it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to address the council? Yes, just step to the podium and tell us your name and your street, please. Thank you.
My name is Phil Peschcio, and I live at 1620 Clermont Drive, San Bruno. And I've lived there for 24 years, approximately, and actually grew up in San Bruno by Scully College, so I've been here actually 53 years. And since I moved to Clermont Drive, about every other year or so, I live on the canyon, Crestmore Canyon, so every other year or so, whenever we've had a heavy rain, I've always been a little concerned about the landslide activity that's occurred. And the house that I'm in has a history of landslide activity. And I've come to the city a few times and asked, "Gosh, what's the plan for the canyon?" And, by the way, I apologize if some of the stuff has already been addressed in the past as far as the canyon, but I don't know, I don't know what the future plan is for the canyon. And in 2010, actually right after the PG&E explosion fire, I went down to the city to ask about, because of some of the foliage that got lost, I was concerned about increased landslide activity. And I discovered from a neighbor that there was kind of an independent report done back in 2007 on the canyon, which I thought was kind of interesting because I'd never heard of it. I've lived there for a long time, never heard about it. So I made a request to the city attorney for this document, and I had it mailed to me. And it's a pretty substantial report that outlines pretty much nine different priority sites within the canyon that are at risk of landslides. And it has my address in there by number, and so I was kind of concerned that I saw my own address in that. And it also gave kind of remediation, sort of cost estimates, and I just don't know what the city has done to kind of follow up on that from the time of 2007. And I'm a little bit concerned on the city's behalf, just because we all easily criticize PG&E for what they knew or should have known, and in a way, I think the city of San Bruno is in the exact same spot, because if there was a landslide to occur, and if a house happens to be lost or a life gets lost, it could look really bad if nothing. And so I bring this to your attention just to make sure that you might know about this report. If you don't already, I don't have any copies, but I'm happy to make copies of it. But really, what I really want to know is what is the plan for the canyon and the storm drain issue and just the potential landslide activities there? Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want San Bruno to be in the same sort of critiqued position as PG&E someday.
Okay, well, without getting too much detail, a meeting ago, excuse me, or two meetings ago, we had a fairly comprehensive report.
Okay.
On, on not just the canyon, but some of the remaining things that have to be done after the explosion. And there's a fairly comprehensive plan for that canyon, and I think if you talk to staff tomorrow morning, call Carol, the city clerk, she can put you in touch with Harry Burrows, who is our contact up outside all the time, and he can give you all of those documents with maps and layouts. So to work out some of the final details, but there is a plan to...
Serve as the plan for the canyon specifically.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay?
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, item number 10, conduct of business. Item A, adopt a resolution approving the San Bruno Community Foundation's 501(c)(3) application and three-year budget.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council.
And let me just say one thing, Mark, just so everyone knows, everyone knows. I just want to reiterate, this is not a full-blown, comprehensive report on what everybody's been doing up to date. It's pretty much a highlight of where they are at this point in time, but we will be getting a full report from the entire foundation board probably within the next two months. So I just want to reiterate, tonight is not the night to get into all the minutia, but we want to get the 501(c)(3) approved so that we can get the big report together sooner than later. So, Mark, thank you.
Right, thank you for that comment. We are here tonight on this item to review and, at your discretion, approve the San Bruno Community Foundation's three-year budget, and that's a budget that accompanies the 501(c)(3) application that the foundation is intending to file with both the Internal Revenue Service and then the State of California to obtain tax-exempt status. As you've indicated, this is a big step for the foundation as it moves forward toward full operations, which it's been working diligently on in the last many months. The staff report in front of you details all of the steps that you, the city council, took since last March, informing that organization. And as you've indicated, the San Bruno Community Foundation president and other board members will be coming to you at a subsequent meeting to tell you all about their activities. But tonight's action is limited to review and approval of the three-year budget and the 501(c)(3) application. I do see that Treasurer Ben Cohn is here from the foundation to introduce himself and answer any questions if you have them. There are two other members of the foundation board here, Frank Hedley and Pat Bohm. We're aware that a couple of other members wanted to come but couldn't, so it was a pretty good representation who wanted to be here and who are here tonight. Let's just take a minute and tell you a bit about the staff report. It does explain the numbers and assumptions that are behind the budget, and it's important to keep in mind that this budget is required to be a good-faith estimate. That's what the IRS says. It's not an operating budget. That's something that the board is going to do separately and independently at the appropriate time. So the budget can be modified at a later date. This budget is really just for the purposes of filing the 501(c)(3). It's required to be filed along with it because the IRS wants to know what's the organization's plan. So in summary, the budget anticipates about a 7% return on funds and about a 5% payout in the next two fiscal years. What is that based on? Well, it's based on the development of grant-making and investment policies, and those policies are yet to occur. So that's something that we and the consultants will be helping the foundation do over the next coming months. The budget also indicates an intent to hire an executive director and possibly an administrative assistant to perform the majority or all of the work of the foundation. The other line items in the budget are detailed in the staff report. I won't go through them unless you have any, any questions. They were all based on a couple of things. First, input from the consultant at the Silicon Valley Community Foundation, but also the board of directors appointed a subcommittee consisting of board members Hedley, Bohm, and John McGlothlin, who isn't here tonight. And they worked closely with staff and the consultant to develop the information that's in the budget, and we'd like to thank them for their assistance with that. So attached to your staff report tonight is the staff report we prepared for the foundation when this item went before them. They reviewed the budget, they had a couple of tweaks to it, we corrected some typos, and they eventually, as you can see, adopted a resolution approving the budget and the entire 501(c)(3) application. We did spare you from that 70-page application. It is online. You can find it, if you wish, on the city's website under the San Bruno Community Foundation, and it's listed as one of the agenda items for the Community Foundation's staff report for their May 15, 2014 meeting. So that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure that Treasurer Ben Cohn would be happy to introduce himself as well.
Good. Any questions for Mark? Ben, you're on.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As was mentioned, my name is Ben Cohn. I'm the treasurer of the San Bruno Community Foundation, joined by a couple of my fellow board members here and those that couldn't make it this evening, send their regards. I'd just like to sort of reiterate how important this milestone is for the foundation and our progress and moving forward. It was a real collective effort of the board, city staff, our council, and consultants, and I think that we've worked exceptionally well together to this point and are very happy to have arrived at this moment to put this application and budget before you for your approval. I'd also like to just mention that, you know, a budget is really more than a financial document. It really speaks to the values of an organization, whether the federal budget to the family budget, whatever it may be. And I think that in looking through our budget and our application, you'll really find our commitment to the community, our commitment to prudence and due diligence in the work that we're doing. And I think that I can speak for all the board members and say that we're all very honored and privileged to be able to serve in this capacity, and we look forward to what lies ahead. Thank you.
Any questions for Ben at this time? Action by the council?
If I could ask, I should, we're talking $70 million. That's, you know, startup for this, for the foundation. Is it because it's truly that much money that this whole setup and the process is this involved? I've been affiliated with service organizations that have gotten 501(c)(3) status and also smaller foundations, you know, under a half a million dollars, you know, but basic paperwork and things and, you know, nothing of this scale. So could you just, if you could...
Sure. Right, there's really, I think, a couple of key reasons why this process has been so complicated. The first one is you indicated is, yes, it's a tremendous amount of money. And so I think everybody wants to make sure that they're doing it right the first time because with that much money, you don't really get a second chance. The second reason why it's so complex is because unlike other foundations with seed money, this foundation was started with money that was the result of a legal settlement between the city and PG&E, and that's a very unusual circumstance. And that has resulted in both the attorneys and our consultants wanting to make sure they're cautious about each step of the way, making sure that all of the legalities are taken care of. The third reason why it's so different is because unlike other foundations, this foundation lives in a world that is neither entirely nonprofit nor entirely public entity. It's both. Most foundations are simply nonprofits. They're governed by the corporations code. This foundation is governed by both the corporations code and the government code, the same code that you all are governed by. So whenever we have documents to look at or policies to prepare, we have to make sure that they comply with both sets of rules, and it's been remarkably challenging to do that. Lastly, this is one of those things that I don't think anybody's ever done before. And so in a way, both our outside counsel, myself, the staff, and our consultants are inventing something that has never, never previously existed, and I think those are the reasons why it's been such a difficult but also very rewarding process.
And lastly, for the benefit of the public that finds out that we're taking some action here, any estimate as to when the foundation will be in operation?
That's, that's a good question. That, we don't have an exact estimate for you right now. What we want to do is make sure that the foundation has in place all of the policies or the critical policies that are necessary for its operation, because if they start operations before those policies are implemented, then somebody's likely to say, "Well, how come you didn't do this?" Or "How come you didn't do that?" So we think it's critical for those policies to be in place before important community decisions are made. In addition to that, there's also going to be, I think, as you expected, a public process for all of that to occur. We do know that the IRS could take up to 18 months to approve the application, but that's not going to stop the foundation from diligently continuing to meet every month as it has in the last over five or six months to get all of those policies squared away. We're hopeful it will be in the next fiscal year.
Okay. Anything else?
Chair, I was just going to say, and I think the city attorney said it is, that it is something, again, uncharted. And so it's a matter of getting it right. They're under the Brown Act as far as provisions and posting meetings, and it may take longer to get things done, but it's certainly done with transparency. It's also done, I think, with a lot of thought through the process, just as we tried to come up with bylaws that had to last for three years. My understanding on this particular issue with the budget, it's something that we need to get down and have something of a starting point, but it doesn't necessarily put anyone within the parameters of the budget, but something, the process must begin somewhere. So I would say that the board is in operation and has been since its appointment by this council. So I think they're up and running, and I think they're taking a task that will have rewards in the end, but obviously will have a slow process to get to those, and I commend them for that. them for that. And I know it's not easy, but they're moving the ball forward, and I think I'd rather err on a little bit more time in getting it right.
Anyone else? Irene?
Thank you. I just want to thank each member of the board and remind the public that these are dedicated volunteers. They put hours and hours into this and a lot of thought and attention, and when you corral them at the grocery store, they are doing this out of the goodness of their heart and for the love of the community. So please keep that in mind and don't harangue them. Thank you.
Anyone else? Action by the council?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. I would also like to add my sincere appreciation to the entire board. I'm sure you're all delighted that you volunteered for this. But it's going to, it is rewarding, and it's going to be very rewarding. You started with a blank sheet. Nobody's ever really done this type of thing before. It's a real hybrid. And walking through this little minefield of federal regulations and the Brown Act and everything else that a lot of other nonprofits don't have to negotiate, so it's been quite a ride. It's not over yet, but you're doing a great job, and we really appreciate your efforts. Thank you very much. Item 10b is authorized firework stand permit for 2014 upon finding that the nonprofit organizations meet requirements of Resolution 20859 at ordinance number 1700.
Honorable mayor and council, I come before you once again to ask for your authorization for approval of firework stands. The applications have been reviewed by my office, by the fire department, the police department, as well as councilmembers O'Connell and Ibera, who are part of the subcommittee. One of the questions that came out of the subcommittee meeting concerned one of the group's membership being outside San Bruno. That group has been operating in San Bruno for many, many years, and they took last year off because they had no one to run their activity. They're actively soliciting people from San Bruno. Their Cub Scouts all grew up and became Boy Scouts, and all the money that they raise goes to the Cub Scouts and to the First Tonkin Church's youth group. So that was what I found out about that one group. And then the other group, I had no list of all their players, and I got that. Only 18 firework stands are permitted, nine of which have been grandfathered status, and as of the deadline, 17 of those applications were received. On June 4th, there was a mandatory meeting, firework safety meeting, conducted at City Hall where all permit applicants were in attendance. The costs associated with the firework activities are recovered from the firework stand permit holders. Each applicant has to pay $750 right up front, and then the additional costs we bill back to them, and those costs include community and fireworks user education, enforcement of all firework regulations, and community cleanup following July 4th. And I will be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Carol? Action.
To the chair, I'd just like to say, since we're on a theme of volunteers, whether you like fireworks or not, every organization that runs these 18 booths works very hard, and it gets increasingly difficult each year to find volunteers, but it's a lot of money that goes back into the community. And with that, I will introduce the resolution.
I think we just need a motion.
Or make a motion to accept the recommendation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize firework stand permits for 2014. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item 10c has been pulled. Item 10d is adopt a resolution adopting the 2014 storm drain master plan.
Honorable mayor, councilmembers, the city provides many services to our residents in order to maintain a certain level of quality of life and to protect public health and property. Many of those services, like water, sewers, roads, transportation, storm, require and need a infrastructure to provide those services. To be able to guarantee the sustainability, reliability, and certainly to minimize the cost maintaining those services is very critical to have a long-term assessment of the need of the system and when the system needs those improvement. Us responsible managers for those system for the city, you already approved the updated master plan for our water system, for our sewer system, and also you are approving on ongoing basis our payment management system. Our storm master plan is the last, certainly not the least important, system which need this long-term assessment. Wing Wong is the project manager for this project, and he will take you through the content of the master plan, also the conclusions, the findings, and the recommendations. Mark Chauan from Sematell Flood District is here also. Their need is included in our master plan assessment.
Thank you, Glenn. Good evening, mayors and council. The storm drain master plans provide a thorough evaluation of the storm system. It defines a long-term capital improvement program, and it also serves as the roadmap for future rate studies and storm fee revision for the implementation of the proposed improvement. To give you a little background and history, the city council adopted a storm system study in 1991, and then an update after study in 2000. And this 2014 storm drain master plan that we are presenting is the city's first comprehensive storm system master plan. And there are some significant accomplishments with this master plan. The city had the least information on the storm system compared to sewer and water, and at the early stage of the master plan preparation, only 5% of the storm system data available was accurate. And during the process of the master plan preparation, we, the comprehensive information and data on the storm system were verified and compiled, and then put it into the hydraulic model for evaluation. And this master plan is based on accurate information for over 90% of the storm system. This map here shows basically the San Bruno storm drain system. There are six water sheds, and they're labeled A, B, C, D, E, and F. And in general, the storm water runs from the west to the east. The major branches of the sewer system, they were constructed in the early 1900s. And at the Bell Air covert here, that's the backbone of the storm system. And the collection system consists of inlets, V ditches, pipes, culverts, earth channels, A hydraulic model and flow monitoring were used to predict the flow condition in a 25-year design storm. First of all, the 25-year design storm is not a storm that occurs every 25 years. It's the intensity of the storm that occurs on an average of every 25 years based on historical rain data. So why did we pick the 25-year design storm? It's all a matter based on the risk versus cost. If we were to select a five-year storm, yes, the improvement would be fairly inexpensive. However, any storm that was about that in a 10-year, 25-year, that would be a lot of flooding. But if we were to select like a 100-year storm, maybe even go up to 150-year storm, it would be very expensive, and it would probably end up being rebuilding half the city storm system, and that becomes unrealistic. And so at the early stage of the preparation, the 25-year storm was selected. And one of the results of this hydraulic model, it predicted that localized flooding conditions throughout the city in a 25-year storm. And the next few slides were prepared in response to requests from the utilities subcommittee. And what are the problem areas? And again, the problem areas defined as area that would likely flood in the 25-year intensity storm. So this is watershed A, and you can see the circled areas are the problem areas. So you've got some along El Camino, and then there are some moving towards Huntington in this group of area here. This slide shows the problem areas in watershed B and C. So there is areas near the downtown area on Mastick and also on the Genovin area. And in watershed B, it's near the city park and also Cuberoe area. And then in watersheds E and F, you can see along San Bruno Avenue and also on Seventh Avenue near Angus. And two approaches were used to determine the necessary capital improvements. The first one was the pipe option, which totals $26 million, and then the detention option was $20 million. So basically, the pipe option approach is to use, design a system that anything that goes into, any storm water that goes into the system will be able to be conveyed and go into the channel, whereas the detention option is the ones that allow for some room in the system to hold on to the rainwater a longer period of time so that it doesn't overflow. And the main difference between the pipe option and the detention option is that there's a major pipe improvement project in watershed A between Interstate I-280 and El Camino Real, whereas in the detention option, we are proposing a detention basin at the Crestmore Canyon. And based on feasibility and cost, the master plan recommends the detention option, the one for the $20 million. And that's the location of the Crestmore Canyon Detention Basin. And what are the recommended improvement? There are five priority projects, the priority one projects. And priority one projects are the ones that basically will cause a major flooding event if, that will cause a major flooding event. And so the five priority one projects consist of the Crestmore Canyon Detention Basin and four other pipeline improvement projects for a total of $12 million. There's also $1 million for municipal regional permit compliance and for the long-term trash control, operation, and maintenance. In addition, there's seven priority two projects for $7 million for total of the $20 million. The master plan also identified two county flood control projects, and they are the rehabilitation of the tide gate and also the Walnut and the Angus Pump Station. And this slide shows the location of the tide gate and also the Walnut Pump Station, Angus Pump Station. And come to funding, the city has storm water fund to track proceeds of drainage parcel fee, and it currently collects about $500,000 to $600,000 a year and supports the operation and maintenance work for the storm system. There are about $1 million in reserve. The city will need to revise the storm fee structure in order to fund any of the proposed capital improvement project. And STAB has proposed to return to the city council within two years with funding alternatives prior to the implementation of any storm fee revision or the approval of any improvement So in conclusion, it's been a long time coming, and we finally have a comprehensive storm system master plan in place. It provides a definitive capital improvement program. It also identified funding issues or the lack of funding issues. And as the first step towards the, you know, improvements for the storm system and the level of services, STAB is recommending the adoption of this 2014 storm drain master plan by the city council. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm here to answer questions.
I am sorry, I did fail to mention that Ted Chapman, who is our service manager for the storm system, is here also.
Any questions of staff? Mr. Rico, you had a question?
Robert Rico, Seventh Avenue down, excuse me, very near Angus, where you said there are concerns and the pipe that is, kind of gets the brunt of the water. You talk about in your proposal that a 25-year storm back in 2000, 2003, the two or three big storms that came through, people had said that possibly they were upwards of rated at 100-year storm. What consideration does your proposed plan give to be able to do some kind of support for a storm in excess of a 25-year storm? And if it doesn't, should there be some consideration? Should there be some preliminary concerns to tackle something more than a 25-year storm? Thank you.
Mr. Rico, as I mentioned earlier...
Mr. Mayor, do you want us to respond?
Yeah, why don't you respond?
You're on, Wayne.
Okay, Mr.
You were going, sorry. Sorry for your moment.
Okay. Mr. Rico, as I mentioned earlier, there were five projects in the priority one list, and being one of them is number two on the list, and that is the proposed pipeline improvement along Angus and also additional inlets, enlargement of the existing inlets, and right, and additional piping for the inlets right at the intersection. In fact, it's at the northeast corner of Angus and Seventh. So that's one of the priority one projects.
If I might add some additional information is that also all of... is that also all of the improvements under the rail, which were part of the Great Separation Project, they were designed and implemented for 100-year storm event. Their capacity under the track is able to basically take the 100-year flood event. Also, in case if the main culvert will be designed that will be contemplated during the design, what will be the appropriate level of design in more detail specifically for that pipe? What would be the cost differential? And what would be the best solution at that time? How to design that culvert to what size? And also, the city started having discussion with the Flood Control District, which really is the most critical partner in this addressing the overall risk involved in any kind of major flood event. And was our discussion that we'll be developed a plan in case, or in those cases, what would be the plan, including, and I don't, this is just a preliminary phase, even developing some kind of agreement with the airport, how, where you could release those excess water and what would be the solution in those situation.
Okay. Ken?
All right, we're on the subject of the canyon still. So I'm assuming that detention, when you say detention, will mean that you're going to collect water in the canyon, mostly from the western part of the city, you know, so that allows the flow a lot easier towards the east. I'm assuming that all the discussions about what we heard earlier on landslide improvements and any other improvements that are going to be discussed now at a preliminary stage, you know, for the Glenview area, that's all taken consideration with the collection of, you know, for the storm water? You know, for the laypeople, I mean, which are about 99% of us who aren't engineers, we hear collection in the canyon, and we're thinking reservoir, so...
It is a reservoir, in a sense.
Now you're really going to get people talking, so...
Certainly, this is a known recommendation, and will be part of, you already approved a preliminary assessment of the geological condition of the whole canyon. And during those assessment, part of how to integrate in the overall design of the canyon, any improvement in the canyon, how stabilize, how to implement any improvement. This project will be an important component. And maybe also will provide some enhancement to that whole redesign environment of the canyon. But certainly, this is a known project and will be part of the consideration.
The process is that, are we going to be seeing something at the, you know, this year as far as a funding proposal? Or is that something within the next two years that we're talking about?
Our recommendation was in the two-year timeframe, but if you think that is too far out, and the reason is that the follow-up step is to develop a rate study, which could more specifically address the need. And considering the overall, you have, will be your decision and your direction. But considering the competing needs, and you approved that very aggressive improvement plan for water and sewer, and is the intent to come back with the payment management, which require increased investment in our payment management, which started to become a quality of life for our residents. And also the issue of ROs, that you recall a certain portion of our streetlight system cannot be replaced, the heads, to LED until 30% of our system is not improved, which we'll still need to identify funding sources. That's the only reason why staff included in the recommendation in this two-year, but certainly will be your decision how you see the priorities and the need of those competing funding needs for the city. And certainly, since the time, you will decide that this is the priority, and you want staff to start the rate study, that the rate study in four, five months can be developed, and then you can make a decision after.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Irene?
Claire, would you clarify where the money comes from now for the storm drains?
It's a partial tax. The city is in a, you say, not entirely unique, but not too many cities in Sematell County has this special revenue, you say, partial tax. And everybody pays around 54, I don't remember exactly, but around that dollar amount. And the total revenue is between 500,000 to 600,000,000 a year. This year was, is, I think, is budgeted $590,000. But typically, those are, almost all of that dollar limit is budgeted for operation and maintenance. And it's just not enough for this big investment in the system improvement itself.
Right, and the process to increase that would be through a vote of people? Is it a 218 issue?
I am sorry, was my recollection at the Subcommittee meeting was that it's a 218 process, but I made the commitment that I will verify with the legal, and unfortunately, I failed to do that. But would be, was my assumption that it's a 218 process, it's not a vote.
Okay, so it's a protest vote?
Correct.
Okay.
To the Chair? I recall a discussion when we were talking about the sewer and water rates, that anything that was placed on a tax rule was subject to a vote, a general population vote, not a 218 process, which is limited to fees and things that are, you basically get something for what you pay.
Well, we'll need to look into that, and we'll come back to you with an answer. We're not really prepared to address it this evening, but we understand the question, and we'll make sure that everybody gets an answer shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Michael? I would just comment that the action before us today is simply approving the plan. But I do think it would be prudent to start looking at funding sooner rather than later, rather than putting it off for two years. I think now that we have an idea of what we need to undertake and the magnitude of the cost, that certainly now that the economy is doing well and we have some options, it would be good to start considering these things as well as all the other projects you mentioned that need to find funding sources sooner rather than later. Just that comment.
Agreed. Any action by the council?
I'll introduce.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruwing.
Aye. And item 10E is receive report and direct staff to cancel the regular August 12, 2014 City Council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a fairly straightforward action to allow you the opportunity to consider whether you would like to cancel one meeting in August, as has historically been the City Council's practice. Last year, I believe it was the council's interest to move from the second meeting in August as the meeting to be canceled to the first meeting in view of school schedules and other considerations related to a time period when it may be most advantageous to have a short period of no meeting. So with that, staff stands at your pleasure with regard to the number of meetings that you would conduct during August. According to the municipal code, you have a regular meeting schedule that would require you to meet on the second and fourth meeting, second and fourth Tuesdays of every month, unless you take a specific action to cancel a meeting. So that's the opportunity that's being presented to you tonight.
Okay. Is that right with everyone?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay. You have your direction? Item 11, report of commissions, boards, and committees. There aren't any this evening. Item 12, comments from councilmembers?
To the Chair? I was down on Sematell Avenue this weekend and have received a couple photos today, as well as some conversation and email. Around the city bank area on Sematell Avenue, there are some that have concerns in regards to what is occurring as far as maybe just the mess, and again, those that are loitering. So I just wanted to, I had said to somebody this weekend that I would bring that up here since we had a meeting on Tuesday, so I just wanted to bring it to staff's attention. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Item 13, we will go into closed session. We have three items. A is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2, one case. Item B, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, city attorney. And item C, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, city manager. Item number 14, this meeting will be adjourned until next regular City Council meeting right here on June 24.